If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me with prayer, please? Supreme Architect of the universe, we invoke thy blessing at this time, and this meeting thus be conducted in peace and closed in harmony. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our Thursday, October 10th, 2013 Public Business Meeting. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Yes, sir. There's an additional motion to be made this evening. And we'll have to let Mr. Rudd speak.
Any explanation at this point?
Yeah, it's a motion related to an option to purchase that the county possessed. We're giving up on property that's currently owned by Mexico Farms LLC, your Oartz Fibra.
I assume that was in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, made by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll call that 2A on our agenda, gentlemen. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our October 3rd, 2013 Public Business Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under report of the President, gentlemen, I am very proud to announce that the Maryland Rural Counties Coalition is going to be holding an economic summit on Friday, November the 15th. They have their coffees ready. From 8:00 to 1:00, it's going to be down at the Governor Calvert's House State Circle in Annapolis. The keynote speaker for our economic summit is going to be, I always pronounce it wrong, Anabon Basu, who is giving a perspective on the economic impact of the importance of Maryland rural counties. And I've added from chicken to coal, as the importance of the rural counties has on the state of Maryland. At that meeting, we'll listen to the keynote speaker. Then we're going to have Blair Lee from the Gazette be a moderator for a roundtable form of legislators and interest groups to talk about the 2014 legislative perspectives that's pertaining to the rural counties. So it's another benefit of the rural counties coalition, and just thank you for your support. Hopefully, you guys will be able to come. Anyone from the press that would like to go? I will be going down and be glad to give you a ride if you like, or I could write something, or I can tape something, or whatever I could do to help you guys to show some light to this.
Don't let him write anything. Don't let him do it.
Okay, you know, my history precedes me. So anyhow, if anybody else would like to know about this, please see me. It's pretty important and some good stuff. At the end of the economic summit, the counties are going to have a board meeting and elect the 2014 chairman. Okay. Commissioners, item number one, it happens to be National Fire Prevention Week. Ms. Lee, come on down.
And Clarence.
And Clarence, I apologize. Mr. Vice President, good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. The Fire Prevention Week was established to commemorate the great Chicago fire of 1871 that killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 people homeless, destroyed more than 17,000 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres. Fast forward to the present, our most recent statistics show that thousands of people are injured every year, thousands of people are killed, and the number-one cause of these fires are kitchen fires. Excuse me, my voice is going a little bit, so bear with me. Clearly, fire is an ever-present danger in our lives, but we can take steps to prevent this. One organization that strives to bring fire prevention information to the public's attention is the National Fire Protection Association. Every year, the NFPA chooses an appropriate theme for Fire Prevention Week, and this year's theme is simply "Prevent Kitchen Fires." There are several things that we can each do every day, including making sure that you're wearing short or very close-fitting sleeves when you cook, maintain a kid-free zone of at least three feet around the stove and oven, stay in the kitchen when you are frying, grilling, or boiling food. Those types of fires are often very much of a flash fire episode, can happen very quick. If you're there, you have a chance maybe to put it out. If you're not, you could lose it very quickly. If you are simmering, baking, roasting, or boiling food, check it regularly and use a timer. Above all, remain in the home when you're cooking. Do not put something on the stove and then say, "I think I'll run to the store." That's not a good idea, and a lot of people do it. Keep combustibles away from the stovetop, such as food packaging, oven mitts, towels, wooden utensils, and keep a lid nearby when you're cooking to smother small grease fires. And the important thing with this is when you're smothering a grease fire, and you have your pan and it's on fire, you don't take the lid and go down like this because you're going to force the flames up around your hands. You slide it over the fire like this, you're smothering it as it goes. If it gets out of control, get out and stay out like any other fire. Call 911. If you are sleepy, if you've been taking medication that makes you drowsy, or if you've been consuming alcohol, don't use the stove or the oven. So if we can incorporate these habits into our daily routines, we can do an awful lot to prevent this preventable tragedy.
Thank you.
Susan, what was again the distance for the child-free zone from the oven?
A minimum of three feet.
Did you violate the distance?
Square footage per child, that's real tough in my home, but we'll try.
You'll try. Okay, very good. Clarence, did you have anything to add to that?
This week is Fire Prevention Week at the mall. The Allegheny Garrett County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association will be manned in the center court of the mall. They'll have all kinds of literature and be letting you know about the fire. Our main concern this year was smoke detectors, and the fire companies, you see anyone in any fire company, they'll get you smoke detectors. They're free, they're 10-year, you don't have to change your battery. All you have to do is test them in the spring and fall, 10 years, throw them away, and you can get them off of any of the fire companies now. I think right now the Cumberland Fire Company has the abundance of them. We're out of them now at the association, and I installed 36 of them in Lonnie County myself for homes that didn't have fire extinguishers. Along with that, this is the time of the year when you want to be sure with your electric blankets. If you have to have an electric blanket, what you should do in the spring, you should throw that electric blanket in the garbage and buy a new one. That's my theory. I know it costs you money, but after you're rolling around in that and have it all balled up and everything, it's really not safe to use it the second and third year. But be sure when you get out of bed, make it a practice, turn that electric blanket off. Don't let it sit there balled up all day, that could be a fire. And we're losing enough friends as it is with natural causes. We don't need to do anything by being stupid. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Clarence and Susan, would you join us up here, please, for this presentation? Yep, come a little bit closer. Promise I won't be too far. You're all right. You can read. You're doing good. Allegheny County Government Proclamation. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern in Allegheny County and throughout the nation, and whereas home is the location where individuals are at greatest risk from fire, two of every five homes start, fire, kitchen, fires start in the kitchen, and leading cause of kitchen fires is unattended cooking. And whereas, in addition to installing and maintaining smoke alarms, stay in the kitchen when frying, grilling, or boiling food, remove flammable items from the vicinity of the cooktop, and keep children at least three feet away from all cooking activities. Now, therefore, we, as the Allegheny County Commissioners, in recognition of the importance of fire prevention practices, proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2013, as National Fire Prevention Week. Prevent kitchen fires in Allegheny County, and urge all individuals to be proactive. Check your kitchen for fire hazard now and use safe cooking practices at all times. Signed by all three county commissioners of Allegheny County. Thank you. That is the most important thing in the house. Back the phone to get delivered. Oh, he needs me again.
I'm trying to switch chairs on me.
I don't know if you all know that I'm a little bit taller than both Commissioner Valentine and Commissioner Brody, and they switched chairs on me to make it a level playing field here.
That's even true when you're laying down, Mike.
Wow. I may need some help from the audience.
I suggest we just keep moving with this.
Item number two, gentlemen, is the County United Way of the Potomac Highlands Mission of Mercy. I understand that Ms. Mary Beth Pelosi, the executive director, good evening, young lady, and how are you?
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here. And first, Commissioner McKay, I want to thank you for being in the royal flesh dunk tank last week for United Way, and so you are much drier today than what I last saw you, and thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope you did well in raising money that day.
We were very happy. We did really well.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Good cause, it was worth getting double deer infection again.
Well, thank you. Well, I'm here to talk to you and the audience and your listeners and readers about the Third Western Maryland Mission of Mercy. On October 25th and 26th, Friday and Saturday, will be the Free Dental Clinic at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds Multi-Use Room, and it will be beginning at 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. both days. There are no pre-qualified forms you have to do, no economic financial qualifiers. Everyone is free, welcome to come. The last two years, we had folks who came from seven states and 22 counties. We served in the two days in the two previous years. Each year, over 850 clients, providing nearly $1 million of free dental services. Now, a lot of people don't realize that dental disease and dental problems are within the top categories of the reason that people go to the emergency room. And a lot of people, while they may have health insurance, do not have dental insurance. And so there will be approximately 70 dentists and other practitioners who will be available during those time from across the state, dental hygienists, and there will be a health triage team that will be reviewing people and answering, looking through their questionnaires before they place them in the dental chairs. So there will be the health pre-screening, you know, prior to, so that we make sure that, you know, the people who are having care will be qualified and able to be there. So it'll be on a first-come, first-arrived basis. We have people who usually arrive anytime after midnight, start parking in order to be able to get into line. We will probably be taking the last client each day around 3:00 because once we get people pre-screened and get them in the seats, it'll take that long normally to get those people who are seated into chairs, and so that we can finish by 6:00 because 12 hours with the practitioners is a really, really long day for those folks to be, you know, in the dental chairs and offering the services, and then we start again on the next morning. So we are also still in need of volunteers. We take usually about 400 to 500 volunteers in order to be able to accommodate this. This is a joint venture with the Allegheny Garrett Dental Society, headed up by Dr. Romaine. County United Way is involved, Allegheny Health Right. We have two really great major sponsors this year, coming from Care First and Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, along with Henry Schein, that, you know, provides a lot of the dental equipment, and the chairs actually come from the Virginia Dental Association because they were the first to have done this. And so we are looking to a big crowd. Please let any of your friends, family, you know, people who need to have services, let them know that, you know, everyone is welcome. I have some postcards here for you that you can distribute around the building, but also you can go to www.westerndmon.com. It's our website for the Western Round Mission of Mercy. You can sign up to be a volunteer because we do need still some slots for volunteering Thursday night setup, you know, all during the day on Friday and Saturday, and also for the teardown. So it's a really big operation, but truly, you know, in all of my years, it's the most heartwarming event that I have ever had the privilege to participate. So you won't be sorry if you, you know, are, come out there for, we like to have people for, you know, two, three, four-hour blocks of time if you have the opportunity to volunteer, but truly, it's an incredible opportunity and a much-needed service for the people here, not only in our region, but in the surrounding area. So come one, come all, and I will be happy to share these cards with you.
Please, thank you. You know, Mary Beth, I share every year that if there's one thing that I learned from my father, other than where and how to eat, is to take care of our oral health. And he's drilled it into my brother and I that even if you can't get to the doctor once a year, you got to get to the dentist every six months for a cleaning and an overall checkup because so much of the rest of the body really, really relies on the health of the oral. And so this is great, so thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Okay, gentlemen, our action agenda is 2A. That's our first one, that's that addition to the agenda. And Mr. Rudd, would you share?
I will. A little background here, and first of all, just so everybody knows the reason we're putting this in so quickly, we just found out about this issue today, and there's a closing tomorrow that's relevant. What happens is Mexico Farms LLC, which is Oartz Fibra, out in Mexico Farms or the industrial park out there, has a lagoon system for their wastewater. It's actually under consent order with the state of Maryland to clean it up, et cetera. And the property and the business apparently is in the process of being transferred to a new owner. And during the title examination, it was discovered that the county actually has an option to purchase those lagoons. I don't know why we'd want to, but 1986, the county entered into an option agreement where the county had a right to purchase the lagoons from, at that time, Oartz Inc. if they were not being used as lagoons. It was a six-month option. We clearly don't have an interest, but the title attorney found that as an issue, so what you have before you is a motion to give up the right to that option and to enter into an agreement to basically say that so they can go through with their closing tomorrow.
Commissioners, any questions?
And there is another business slated to go in that building.
Yeah, there's a letter which I received on your behalf from Margaret Oartz, who's one of the principals in the Mexico Farms LLC, indicating that the property is being sold. It's being sold, there's a letter going to the press, to a major company. They don't identify yet who is going to invest substantial amounts of money in the business to retain it here and hopefully to expand and increase their employment. So that's information they provide. Yeah, that's a good thing. So we're facilitating that, but.
Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion that move on this 10th day of October 2013 that the Allegheny County Commissioners consent to release of an option to purchase pursuant to an option agreement dated July 28th, 1986, between Oartz Incorporated and the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County, and authorize the President to sign any and all documents necessary to release this option and review of documents by counsel. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, gentlemen, is a public hearing on Code Home Rule Bill Number 6-13, the Water and Sewer Projects Authorization Bond Bill. I did not get the memo on the red shirt, neither did anybody else, but.
I sent the memo, so. I don't know. One of you can have that.
You might need those, Jason.
One of these days, maybe.
Just to be.
I already haven't been here, by the way.
Now he's telling everyone he's smart.
Context.
Yeah, good luck on this.
I'm going to need it. Last week, we introduced bond bill 6-13 that would authorize six different projects in four different districts, Brawlings, Jennings Run, Bedford Road, and Braddock Run. Tonight is simply the hearing, and then you can take possible action after the hearing. So I guess first things first is, any public comment?
Looks like no, we have not.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up that wanted to have public comment on this? No? Okay. Well, I guess we will close this public hearing. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Code Home Rule Bill 6-13, the Water Sewer Projects Authorization Bond Bill, in which was presented last week and the public hearing held today. Is there a second?
Second.
Or I should say?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Fisher. Thank you. Hello, Ms. Barb. Item number five is the Tourist Area and Corridor Signing Program Preliminary Authorization. That's due.
Yes.
The microphone comes down.
I know. I was trying to avoid, but okay. The State Highway Administration has had several meetings with the county representatives from Cumberland, Frostburg, and several of the townships and tourism regarding their new signage program. I have to be honest, this is something that we've been hoping for, for a long time. One of the complaints we often get is that it's very difficult to find, as a tourist comes into town, how to find things, where to get off 68 to get to certain attractions.
Like the Rounder Rec?
Yeah.
Is that a tourist attraction? Soon to be.
The Little Raceway. Right now, there's some limitations to the program that's in place. The biggest limitation is that they only allow up to six attractions or logos on a sign on I-68. Another drawback is we have to pay for it. Another drawback is we have to pay to maintain them. Also, there's a limitation that the attraction has to be within 15 miles of this sign. The new program eliminates all of those disadvantages. And what they're going to do, it's almost like three phases. The first thing that they're asking us to do, and this time, they're really looking to work with us as a partnership and our input, rather than saying, "This is the new program, and here are the signs." The first phase is we are going to solicit from our attractions, applications, to have signage put up on 68 for those attractions. They have a website that you can go to. It's www.roads.maryland.gov, and the acronym for this signage program is TAC. We're going to have applications at the visitor's center, which now is on the second floor of Western Maryland Train Station, since we're locked out of our visitor's center that the National Park Service has. But we will have applications there. We are also sending out email, a notification to all the attractions we have listed in our website. City of Cumberland, City of Frostburg, they've agreed that they're actually going to almost go door-to-door to those places they consider attractions to make sure they know about the program. We're hoping the media will help get the word out, too, that this program's in place because we have a very short turnaround for the attraction, and they would like the applications by November 7th. There are a lot of guidelines to be considered in attraction, but I will say that anyone that goes to that page, even if you don't meet all those guidelines, still fill out the paperwork because there may be exceptions. They ask for a certain number of hours to be open. It's not for retail. They look for restrooms, et cetera, et cetera. But we have some attractions, like the Toll House. It doesn't fit hours being open, but we do have interpretive signage there, so that would be allowed. So there's a lot of exceptions, so I'm going to recommend to anyone that feels they have an attraction or that their place is an attraction, that they do apply for this. After that, they're going to, it goes to a committee, and then we will go through to see if they do, you know, comply with the regulations for the attractions. Then there's a second level. There's the one on 68 on State Highway, and the second level is you come down the ramps, there's going to be more signage, which we now lack quite a bit of, that will take tourists, or even those locals that move here and don't know their way around, to certain corridors that will be named. That's probably going to be the hardest thing to do, and that's, again, going to be working with the different townships, the county, cities, on what will name these corridors. For example, it could be Cumberland Town Center, it could be Historic Washington Street, it could be Canal Place. I mean, there's all different ways you can name a corridor. And then after that, there'll be the ability for more, what they call trailblazing signs to that actual attraction. The limitation is also gone for 15 miles, so places near and dear to my heart, like in Old Town, will not, will be able to be included in the signage program. It's going to take about 18 to 24 months, and the State Highway will pay for these signs. They will pay to maintain the signs. Where they'll need to work with the county and the cities are when it comes to placement of the signs. Because, of course, they'll have, there are certain guidelines for safety on, you know, the room on either side of the sign, especially if it goes into like a sidewalk or the road, and also if that's where they want it to be located. So there's going to be a partnership for probably a good period of time with State Highway on how we get better signage in our community. So I, for one, I'm looking forward to it. We just keep hoping that we catch everyone that feels that they should be considered an attraction. Do you have any questions on this? There's an awful lot of information. I do have some of the presentation that the state gave. I do have applications with me, so if anyone's interested, I'll either give it to you here or if I don't have something, I'll make sure to get back to you. Commissioners?
As you said, it's definitely well-needed and welcomed.
And it's not costing us.
Right.
That's what I like.
All right, Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion that we sign the preliminary authorization of the TAC.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Mr. Dorsey. Good evening, sir. I understand you're here to talk about Rural Legacy Program Grant Agreements.
Yes, I am. Before you, there's a map that shows the 31,000-acre Mountain Ridge Rural Legacy Area, also showing five properties in red that were part of an application we sent downstate to the Department of Natural Resources in February. On the basis of that application, the state has the Rural Legacy Board of Natural Resources. They've approved a $50,000 grant. They've approved a $50,000 grant to allow the county to purchase development easements within the rural legacy area. These properties were selected on the basis of mostly environmental criteria, but it's an entirely voluntary process. In order to use that grant, we need you to approve the agreement with the, with the State of Maryland acting through the Rural Legacy Board.
David, can you just identify for us briefly the environmental criteria that you used?
Well, it's based on soils, agricultural productivity, protection of, of streams, and it's kind of interesting, the top two properties that we have here are located in a protective watershed for a water supply, public water supply. So that probably put them into the highest priority, because keeping people's drinking water clean is essential.
Once they go in this rural legacy area, how long are they in there for indefinitely? Or is there a time limit on that?
Actually, the designation, it's a purchase of the development rights, which travels through time with the, with the property. It sticks with the property.
So once it's sold out, you can no longer do your, forever?
It depends on the, the terms of the easement. Some, some people reserve a right to create a lot, which you're paid for the number of development rights you're surrendering or selling. So it doesn't completely cut off that possibility.
It doesn't pull the properties off the tax rolls?
No. As a matter of fact, one property we had, they had to reassess it based on the sale of the easement. It came back actually more valuable than, I don't know how that worked, but.
Any other questions for Mr. Dorsey, gentlemen?
Yeah, I think I do. So Dave, I'm sitting here looking at this map, and it looks like it runs the east side of Dan, wraps around and goes up, and it looks like it kind of includes Mount Savage and the surrounding area.
Yes, it does.
So, and what technically you're doing is selling the future out of the ground to the state where you can't do nothing, so that one of these days when this country does realize that it needs energy, that it just don't come out of a wall, that this ground then will become inviable for no drilling or nothing like that?
Most likely not. The Rural Legacy does not deal with properties where the mineral rights have been separated from the ownership of the surface.
Very good.
Most of the property, about a third of the property in this thing is actually already protected, because it belongs to the State of Maryland.
Okay, commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the President of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the grand agreement of the State of Maryland for the Rural Legacy Program. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. Have a roll call vote. Commissioner Valentine?
Aye.
Commissioner Brody?
Opposed.
Commissioner McKay? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda, sir?
Commissioners, we have three items on your consent agenda for you to consider this evening. I have a budget amendment from the Board of Education, a flood mitigation buyout located at 15807 Lower Georges Creek Road, and a underage tobacco prevention grant for the sheriff's office.
Commissioners, you have any question about our consent agenda?
On the Board of Education, Randy, normally it says where the money's being transferred from. This one just says to.
But I think it does say from, from, from operations.
The board was under budget and operations by about $780,000, so it's going to use money from there. I think that came over in the letter, just typo, and we'll all make them famous for. But overall, the board came in under budget by about 1.7 million for the total fiscal year. This is a, I don't want to diminish it, it's largely a procedural item that the Maryland State Department of Education requires, that when the board overruns a particular area, that it's covered with overages from another area, and then that has to be approved by both the elected board and the county commissioners. And so this will be used then to close out the fiscal year 13 audit.
Okay. Any other questions? I move to accept our consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Brody?
Aye.
Commissioner Valentine?
Aye.
Commissioner McKay? Aye. Motion carries.
He does.
Okay. Do you have anything on your desk, Mr. Everly?
Nothing to share this evening, sir.
Mr. Rye?
I have nothing further.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting.
He's supposed to. For a half hour straight.
Did he?
Yes, he did.
He did.
And we still had a short meeting.
We did. But I understand that, that some people were upset about how long it went. It went about two minutes over.
Yes.
What he promised.
He promised 15 minutes.
From legal counsel, is there anything you'd like to share with me? Well, thank you for at least attending our meeting. Keeping us straight and on the arrow. All right. I give him a shot to speak, and he doesn't speak. I just don't understand. Commissioners, Commissioner Valentine, what say you?
Well, I've always believed the old saying, says, local government is your last line of defense against an overreaching federal or state government. I think we're seeing it right now. At least your local government is still open and working for the people when it comes down to closing down our, our visitors bureau, because it happens to be in a building that's owned by the federal government. Down my way, they just spent over a million dollars on a boat ramp, and they closed the boat ramp, and then fined people for taking their boats out, not at the boat ramp. I think, yeah, sooner or later, they've got to get this straightened out. I think it's time for certain elected officials to work for the people that's paying their wages.
Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, just a couple little things. One clarification, I had several people congratulate us this week on getting $5 million from the State of Maryland for our tier funding, and they was misunderstanding, they thought it was actually going from the state to Allegheny County, and it's just money that's allocated to this district for the study of the north-south highway. So I just want to clarify that, because I think they thought that our, that we got a check last week.
A lot of things happened when I wasn't here.
Oh, yeah. We actually did get the check, but we cashed it.
It was that new Mercedes you bought.
No wonder the attorney won't speak.
And another thing, as winter grows closer, we have several projects still underway, from Rawlings to Mount Savage, and the contractors, for long, will be working to get everything kind of buttoned up, so please, people, be patient. And with that being said, our tar and chip program is about ending the near, and normally the way that works is after a road's done, about 30 to 45 days later, we come back with the, the sweeper truck and clean the roads. Sweeper truck is broke down right now, so when it gets back to active, we will catch those roads, because I've had lots of calls on that this week, and it's, it's just, yes.
It's in the garage, it'd be on the road like that.
Yeah, I, I actually passed it on the load boy coming down the road the other day, so it was actually right as I was getting a call on the road, so it was easy to answer.
It's been repaired, had to be repaired, there's a little service work to be done, and it'll be ready to run like that.
Yeah, and people need to realize, you know, we got about 300 miles of paved roads, and you try to hit all of them, whether they've been chip sealed or not, with one truck, it, it takes an entire season, so be patient. That's it, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, we have two people that have signed up under constituents. Mr. Jack Davis? As Mr. Davis does come to the podium, please announce your name and address for the record, please. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
George, he's coming, too. Brought backup.
Actually, commissioners, we're here tonight to give you a little update. As some of you are aware, some may not, with the public, we're here to talk about the David J. Lewis Dinner that will be held next Tuesday. Starts, happy hour starts at 6:00, and the dinner program starts at 7:00. What it is, is in labor, we honor David J. Lewis. A lot of people don't know that, which is sad for this area, but he was the founder of the postal system, and that's what really bothers us when you see what happens to our postal system. And every two years, we hold a dinner. Every year, we hold an honoree through labor who also does in the community. This year's recipients are Snake Roberts, who, as we're well aware, does wonderful with the apprenticeship program out at BoTET, or the Career Centers, it's now called, I'm sorry, I was corrected last night, too. And the other one is Robert Engelbach, who is with the Pipe Fitters. And Robert's involved with some games and that sort of thing, with coaching and stuff with the youth leagues. And we'd like to invite the public to, you know, purchase a ticket, come out and, you know, support a great man that we love and hold dear to our hearts, which is David J. Lewis.
How do, how do we purchase a ticket? How do we get the public to do that?
You can call the Union Hall at 301-759-9328. Or you can, you can also pay at the door.
Okay. Oh, no, 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 we're, we're planning on attending, so.
Very good.
Definitely going to be there, and you are correct, I did not know the story behind David J. Lewis, and.
I appreciate your attendance. I'm dinner chairman this year. Try to make me look good.
Okay, all right.
Bring some friends. Well, as good as I can look, anyway.
We can make you our designated eater.
That could be a bargain for sort of bucks.
But excellent, gentlemen, we will definitely be there. Thank you very much, and hopefully, Matthew, you'll make mention about that, and same with you. What's your name again?
Garrett Egan.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
See you all Tuesday.
Appreciate it, we will be there Tuesday, yes. So we're getting ready for fire, Volunteer Fire Association Dinner and Banquets, and Commissioner Brody and I will show up at the banquet together, and a lot of times, he reserves the right to go have dinner with his wife later, reserve the right to have dinner with his kids, so he's not really that hungry at the association meetings. And it took a while, and I knew he needed to warm up to me to get to know who I was, but we now have a plan in place, that we will both go through the line, even though he's not going to eat, I tell him the items that I would like seconds for, and he will put it on his plate, then I will eat, and then at the time that's right, we will say something like, "Look at the birdie in the corner," and we will switch plates. He looks like he has enjoyed his meal and, and is being part of the team, and I'm able to get seconds without having to get up, and so.
You know, I wish I could sit here and tell you that that was a story, but that is actually true. That has actually happened, so.
And the worst part is, whenever he's after thirds, and the people don't know what's going to happen, and Mike says, "Look at the birdie."
So, at the dinner on Tuesday. Just, it all depends. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Ms. Summer Roy, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come in this evening and speak about the plight of the federal correctional workers at this time. As you mentioned, my name is Summer Roy, and I am the Legislative Coordinator for AFGE, that's the American Federation of Government Employees Local 4010. Our local represents approximately 300 bargaining staff at the Federal Correctional Institution here in Cumberland, as well as staff at the Mid-Atlantic Regional Office down in Annapolis Junction. As you all heard, there's a shutdown. In fact, I was in DC last week, had several appointments set up on Capitol Hill, but had to return, because several of the staffers had to go home. Maybe it was a blessing, I had a 1:00 appointment at the Senate Hart Building, so maybe, you know, things happen for a reason. At any rate, when I was down there for the short trip, I had the pleasure of meeting Dawn and Jean Williams, parents of Officer Eric Williams, who was murdered at USP Keenan in Pennsylvania this past February. Their son's murder was the direct result of understaffing of correctional workers and inmate overcrowding. The Bureau of Prisons believes that the minimum level of maintaining the safety and security of BOP prisons is 90%. We are at 88.3%. Like the local state prison, we are working in volatile, dangerous conditions. I don't know if anybody here has been in a fight. I've been in prison fights and riots, and trust me, when it kicks off, you're praying that reinforcements arrive. Correctional officers working evening watch or morning watch are operating on scale at while staffing rosters. It's not a good feeling in the pit of your stomach when you're with one other officer running to a body alarm in a housing unit, and you know the officer inside could be fighting off 120 inmates. After the death of Eric Williams, USPs, the penitentiaries, have been provided pepper spray, but as far as Williams' family is concerned, too little, too late. We need pepper spray at the medium level facilities as well. We had an incident on the morning of Thursday, August 8, where two staff members were injured when subduing a homemade weapon or shank away from an inmate. Another inmate jumped in and struck responding officers. I was there. This was an instance where pepper spray would have greatly assisted our staff, although it's a medium. Other than staffing concerns and lack of protective equipment, this last Tuesday, we're now on furlough status. Our pay period 19 paycheck, which is supposed to hit next week, will only reflect pay from September 22nd through September 30th. I want you folks to know that inmates are still getting paid. Their money is appropriated differently, it's under trust fund. They are still getting paid, while we are scraping for change to get gas in order to, you know, arrive to work. Additionally, I want folks in the community to know that a lot of staff are looking to get loans, personal loans, and we had one officer who had been working with First Peoples Federal Credit Union here in town for about three weeks, as his family vehicle was falling apart. He was advised Monday by the loan officer that the board decided not to fund loans to federal correctional workers until the shutdown is over. So that's a great example of how we're being treated, you know, by folks in DC, as well as folks in our very own community. I don't know if anybody here works for First Peoples, but I'm changing my accounts, I'm moving my bank, because that's an outrage. So other than that slap in the face, I want businesses to be aware that they're going to lose revenue. You know, staff aren't able to go to Patrick's or local pubs or restaurants to watch the games, because we're not getting paid. Some of us have husband and wife, you know, both spouses at work at the federal prison, so that's two loss incomes. At any rate, this evening, I ask that you contact your local officials, or please help us push for Senate Bill 1567, which provides retroactive pay compensation to federal employees. Additionally, I ask that the community support Senate Bill 1410, which is the Smarter Sentencing Act, and this would alleviate prison overcrowding by releasing the inmates that are first-time drug offenders that are nonviolent. I just want folks to know that our staff are veterans who fought in Iraq and Afghanistan. Many of us are parents, some of us are grandparents raising children and grandchildren. We are caregivers of aging parents and children with disabilities. One officer told me this past Monday that he pays $200 a week for prescriptions for his 13-year-old autistic son. Doesn't know how that's going to happen if he's not getting a paycheck. You know, we even have staff that are fighting breast cancer, yet they're still showing up for work, you know, proudly serving our community and this country, and we just hope people hear our plea for help, officers need assistance. And if anybody's interested, I could provide you the, our website information, where there's some of the information, the Senate bills and so forth.
Why don't you give that, so that it'll be on YouTube, and it'll be on the web? If you give that address right now?
Oh, certainly. That is www.afge, that's for American Federal Government Employees, AFGE Local 4010.com. And I thank you for your time.
Summer, if you would provide those two bills that you want, letters or whatever?
I've got copies, and I will gladly provide you those.
And then I'll work on something for that.
Thank you, sir.
Before you, before you switch your account, let me make a phone call, and we'll see how that.
If you could, but I'll be, you know, quite honest, I'll be candid, the, the officer went ahead and opened up an account elsewhere, and there's a lot of staff that aren't happy, because we are in. because we are in dire straits, and we, a lot of us live paycheck to paycheck. But I will, you know, I will honor that, and I appreciate that.
Let me make a phone call. Let me see. Okay. We've got to circle and support each other here in the community, and so we don't need something that knuckleheads down in Washington, can't get along, and can't, and both parties are at fault, don't get me wrong, I'm not choosing sides here by any stretch of the imagination. But we need to circle the wagons and take care of locals. So this seems to be something.
Summer, let me say, as I know you have a lot of local support, whether you realize it or not, and just so everyone knows, FCI, I sat on the Board of Community Relations, which is hosted by FCI.
Yes.
And FCI is, they go out of our way to help this community every day that they're in existence out there.
We're coaches, you know? And out in the community, we're active with our children and other children. There was a spouse of a state inmate who requested that I coach her two little girls the year thereafter, because I was a good influence, and, you know, and that's just it, whether it's staff, inmates, or the public, this is going to affect us all. We don't need anybody climbing the fence. You know, officers are there to protect the inmates, and, you know, it's, people are going to get hurt or killed, and I'd hate for it to happen here in Cumberland. And the potential is always there. I came from a medium-level institution in California, and it can rock and roll at a medium. We need pepper spray, we need appropriate budgeting, staffing, and it would be nice to get paychecks so we could take care of our families.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'd like to remind everyone that our next public meeting is going to be on the road. Our next public meeting, which is Thursday, October 17th, 2013, is at 5:00 in the town of Luke, in the city building. And I understand there's an anniversary of the mill?
There is.
How many years?
125.
125 years, so we're going to take our show on the road. Do we get to do some form of a theme night, like show tunes?
No, they're expecting the basics.
Birthday cake?
They asked that the theme be "Mike is a Mime."
Yeah, I can come in character. I, wait a minute.
We can celebrate the mill's birthday and someone else's.
Wait a minute!
You'd have to mime it all.
Oh, my gosh. It'll be longer than 17 minutes. All right, remind everyone that a citizen's scrap tire drop-off day, see the news release on that. Please see the announcement about Allegheny County Commissioners, which we just talked about, meeting in Luke, and the Rawlings Water Project Public Meeting. Thank you very much for participating in your government, and have a nice evening.